Oh my god. So. Not that right now.
Yes. Are we ready? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us this evening for the city council work session. At five P M. On January sixteenth. We are having a work session and we will start this evening with our city attorney Becky Stewart. Uh, to give us a review of natural medicine, the Natural Medicine Act.
Mayor, it's Betsy.
I'm, did I say Becky?
It happens.
Please forgive me. It's Betsy. Did I get it right that time?
You absolutely did.
All right.
Thank you. So we'll follow the agenda, but just to give you an overview. Okay, good. That makes me feel better. Um, so I'm just gonna kind of give her overview of what the city can and can't do. And there's three options, um, samples that I provided, uh, from Castle Rock, Frederick and Parker. And then, you know, we'll go through the rest of the agenda, uh, come back to me and I'll look for some guidance at the end on which way we want to go. So that's how my aspect of this will pop in. So as we all know, the Natural Medicine Act and the Natural Medicine Code legalize the use and cultivation of natural medicine under certain circumstances in Colorado. And at the present time, natural medicine relates to the hallucinogenic compounds of psilocybin and psilocin and what I'll refer to. It's commonly known as psychedelic mushrooms, magic mushrooms, anything like that. It may later extend in twenty twenty-six to D M T and mescaline excluding peyote. And Ibogaine, uh, may become, you know, approved at any time. Uh, so, uh, to kind of break it down for you, a natural medicine business is an entity that's licensed by the Colorado Department of Revenue. They created really in-depth regulations, um, yeah, pursuant to statute. I've attended some presentations by Cedar as well as Dora, who handles the licensing access, um, licensing aspect of a natural medicine healing center. So natural medicine business is licensed by Cedar. It includes healing centers, cultivation facilities, product manufacturers, or other licensed entities created by Cedar in the future. Where a natural medicine healing center is a licensed business where a natural medicine facilitator actually conducts, uh, you know, a uh, session that's regulated by the way, you know, by law and the regulations. Um, they also, just so you know, you know, the natural medicine facilitators receive extensive training and they have certain, but I'll call, you know, continuing education requirements and everything like that. A natural medicine facilitator may be, you know, that is their only license, or in some cases, it may be a therapist, you know, gets that as an additional qualification, but either way, it's fine. But I think there's been interest in that aspect of therapeutic benefits of it and, um, psychologists extending their practice that way. So the main thing everybody has to remember is, uh, for a purpose of obtaining policy direction, we can't prohibit, uh, facility or a healing center or cultivation or anything in the city, uh, just by law, we can't. Um, and we can adopt an ordinance or regulation that essentially makes it non-existent, um, and that's by state law. So what can the city do? We can, uh, enact ordinance as a regulation covering time, place, amount, manner of operation of natural medicine-related licenses within the city. So we can do hours of operation. We can do distance requirements from childcare centers, preschools, elementary, middle, junior, high, residential childcare facilities or residential dwelling. State law has a thousand feet. You can extend it a little bit, but, um, a thousand feet is what I've also seen really around the state and different municipalities and seems to be a pretty common acceptance of what, um, the law said and applying it locally. Uh, and to that end, the planning department has prepared two different maps that we'll pull up for zoning, um, that you can see and kind of show you once we get through this. Oh yeah, the list of, uh, the thousand feet will be for a childcare center, a preschool, elementary, middle, junior, high school. So basically, children, uh, childcare schools under college and then residential childcare facilities. So, you know, somebody has it in their house or whatever, or residential dwelling. So a thousand feet from those. Residential dwelling, residential childcare. You couldn't open the business in your house if you're within a thousand feet of, uh, a residential, yeah, no, so.
And Betsy, at some point, will you tell us what, um, Monument and Colorado Springs have enacted or the, the, the two municipalities that you mentioned?
Uh, the ones that I did as a sample were Castle Rock. I don't think they actually ended up, um, adopting, and I think they've tabled it. But they, their attorney really, uh, has done, did a great job. It's Mike Hyman, and that was actually almost kind of a model I noticed that a lot of municipalities have followed, um, a- as a basis. Then Colorado Springs, to my knowledge, has not yet actually adopted one, but they might have done it really recently, so I'll Google that. And, um, Monument, I, I haven't looked at this.
Yeah, I think Colorado Springs.
They went with a mile.
A mile.
Which they're, they're doing that as the trick to try to de facto ban it. It probably won't hold up.
Sure. So if that's, yeah, if that's what, uh, they have done, yeah, I would, you know, uh, the law states thousand-foot distance and you aren't supposed to, um, do it in a certain way. So, um, then, let's see. So the other option is, you know, we can, you know, we can enact zoning ordinances to, you know, locate the areas, um, within the zoning districts, uh, to where, you know, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, storage, distribution, transfer and dispensation occurs. Uh, you can also set criteria surrounding like, um, you know, lighting, odor control, placing bars on windows, things like that of the, uh, the facilities that manufacture it, um, in surveillance cameras outside the doors if you wanted, you know? Uh, and then the process, to the extent we wish to place restrictions on how, um, they're zoned, it'll actually, you all will give me direction on what you'd like. Our office will draft it. And then it'll have to go before the planning commission, public hearing there, and then it comes back to you all. And it'll be a public hearing, obviously, before it goes, you know, can pass or fail, whatever. Um, finally, the Colorado Department of Revenue intends to notify municipalities when it receives applications for licenses and businesses, which I think is, um, you know, great, because they want to make sure they're not approving something in areas not supposed to be improved and, uh, make sure, you know, following the local ordinances somewhere it can go. So that is really the overarching things. The three samples I gave you um, are really representative of just a kind of generally what I'm seeing a lot. Um, so, uh, if you have any other questions right now, I can answer them or start working on them and then, or we can go through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Betsy. Excuse me. Counsel, do you have any questions of Betsy before we move forward in the agenda? All right. The next item we have is benefits of natural medicine healing centers, and we have Jason Friesma. If you'd please join us? Yes, please. Thank you.
I'm gonna try to share my screen, my slide deck. Um, we'll see how that goes. Maybe?
Is that how you say your last name?
Uh, the one. That one is, yeah. Yes, Friesma. The one on the screen, uh, on the agenda, I don't think it was, uh, spelled right. Yeah, good. Tech support's coming. Perfect. Um, I, I guess I just really wanted to, uh, obviously, first, um, th- thank you guys for this opportunity to present, um, on this matter. Uh, as I, as I've talked about at other city council meetings, um, I can't, uh, honestly believe that I'm standing here giving this presentation, to be honest with you. I'm, uh, whatever I need to do, fingerprint? Sorry, got it. And, um, and I also recognize, uh, as a, as a deliberative body that you are, I think this is probably uh, something that you may not have seen kind of coming on to your agenda either. Um, and so I, i- in that regard, I feel like we're, we're in similar places, uh, in a lot of ways. Okay. Boom. I think we're there. Um, I, I, I want to talk about a couple of things. I, I have been, uh, I have been providing journeys to people, uh, both in the Teller County area and El Paso County area, um, under the decriminalization piece, uh, from twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So I'm going to be gathering from my experience in those ways. Um, and so, uh, and then I'm working on, of course, developing a business to kind of do this, uh, on the up and up. Um, I think, uh, as, uh, Betsy mentioned, um, this is a regulated practice, uh, not just by the Department of Revenue, but also by the Department of Regulatory Agencies, which is what oversees, uh, both my license, uh, for, as a professional counselor and my addiction counselor license. So this will just be, um, another license, uh, in that way. So let's see. So my vision and the vision, uh, that I have, um, as I stand before you is, uh, to create a world where suffering formalities that are clearly treatable with natural medicine can be healed quickly and competently. Uh, I, I thought about adding safely too, but I, I hope that's implied. Here's a real quick overview of me. Um, I am a graduate of the high school here, class of ninety-three. Um, my brother's graduated from here. I've had cousins. My kids are graduates of the high school, nieces, nephews. I was educated at the University of Northern Colorado. Um, I've had in my L P C since twenty oh-six. Um, and then I'm currently a contracted counselor at the Veterans Health and Trauma Clinic on the U C C S campus, part of the Leita Hill Center for Human Resilience. And I'm also, uh, E M D R trained, which is, uh, a different modality for, uh, treating trauma. Yep. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm bringing, uh, to the table. Um, some of the things that I wanted to kind of go over, uh, here at the beginning, uh, just for us to consider, um, is that I, you know, I've been doing this for a fair amount of time now and, uh, and I've seen over the course of my twenty-plus years in this field, uh, I've seen a lot of diligent work on creating an opportunity for there to be parity between mental health treatment and medical treatment. Because that hasn't always been the case, right? Like, uh, if any of you have driven by Cedar Springs, uh, it looks like one flew over the cuckoos in us there. Like you can tell it's a psych hospital from, you know, probably a century ago and it, and we've worked, I think, as an industry, very, very hard, um, to de-stigmatize seeking treatment for mental health issues. And then also sought to get medical re- reimbursement and remuneration from insurance companies, uh, uh, on par with, uh, medical procedures. And that's, that is not an easy task to get done. And I, I, and I think we, for the most part, have gotten there. But, uh, the legacy of that, I think, lingers. I think there is still, uh, a fair amount of shame, uh, involved with people seeking help. And what I particularly found is there's a great, there's even more shame around people seeking help that who need it most. Um, when I think about first responders and our veterans, uh, or active duty, uh, soldiers, uh, there's obviously a lot of stigma around having mental health issues that has lingered. And, um, and I think part of this discussion, um, that I'll get to shortly, I hope, is that, um, part of having access to good quality care in a professional manner, um, I hesitate a little bit about putting too many restriction, restrictions around it that may reinforce the shame that can come from it, whether it's putting it in i- industrial areas that, that aren't pleasant to go to or trying to hide it. Um, I think that part feels, uh, really important. So, um, obviously, I work a lot with veterans. I'm gonna, I'm gonna circle back around to that, uh, in a little while. Um, and then I've done a fair amount of journeys actually with, uh, first responders, whether it's, uh, police or, uh, paramedic firefighters. Um, because obviously they, they obviously carry around a fair amount of trauma and, and along with the stigma around seeking help. Um, the other thing, I didn't know where to put this point in here, but, um, part of the people, I, I was trained at a variety of places and now I have to re-enroll in training that is state-approved, but I did, um, some training at a place called Skylight Psychedelics, which is run by, uh, a medical doctor by the name of Dr. Dana Lehrman. Um, and she operates out of Evergreen, uh, Colorado. And, um, part of an organization, she's part of an organization that is in Denver, uh, that goes to, that is on call and goes to emergency departments to respond to people in showing up to emergency departments while on a trip, basically, and sucking up, uh, medical attention that really honestly just needs somebody to kind of sit with some experience with that and, and allow the process to run its course. So, um, I think having an opportunity and bringing a healing center to this community could provide opportunities like that to, uh, partner with, uh, other organizations. So here's where we're seeing amazing efficacy, uh, with the use of psychedelics. And, and I have studies, uh, that I'll cite, uh, later, um, but obviously at the top of this list is P T S D. Um, as I think I mentioned at a city council meeting once before, there is no magic pill for post-traumatic stress disorder. It's often treated, uh, with anxiolytics, uh, like benzodiazepines, like Xanax or Valium. Um, and all that does is treat symptoms. It has nothing to do with getting better. Uh, and actually, those, uh, those medicines are quite addictive as well and actually some of the most extremely difficult medicines for people to detox off of if they end up having to take them daily. But on the other side of that, like if, if somebody is about to, um, harm themselves or just cannot function, uh, it is a good option, but, uh, but it is nice to have another tool on the tool belt. Uh, the other thing that I think psychedelics are good for is what, um, colloquially, I like to call small T trauma, which is maybe not going to war or anything like that, but just the traumas from childhood or other, other things that are kind of stuck with somebody. Can I actually, how much time do I have? I, I, I mean, I could talk a lot about all these things. Um, I do want to say this too, by the way, and I know I'm interrupting myself, but like, I'm always o- I'm always open to questions as well. I'm a therapist, like I prefer questions as we're going. I don't necessarily love to just present for X amount of time. Anyway, time, like, do I've?
You're fine.
I'm doing, okay.
We have till five thirty, I mean, six thirty.
I was gonna say.
You just have a couple of other.
We've got plenty of time. We've got nine minutes.
We do have a couple of other folks, and we do have some pu- public comments.
Yeah, and I, and I want to be really mindful.
I think you're fine. So continue.
Let me know what I'm talking.
I'll help you.
Thank you. Um, so small T trauma, that, these are, I'm gonna spend two minutes talking about trauma. Trauma, unlike a lot of our other challenging and difficult emotions, does not resolve on its own. It, it does require intervention. And what I mean by that is, uh, when, when people maybe experience something like grief, like the loss of a loved one or a pet or whatever, it's grief. It feels intense. It's sad. It, it might be really unpleasant, but as a function of time, it resolves, right? Like it, it begins to go away and diminish over time. And as people maybe attend a memorial service or a funeral or whatever, and commemorate, commemorate a year, uh, looking back on with the person or the animal or whatever, i- it tends to resolve. And, and most of our negative emotions resolve. But trauma is different. It is a stuck emotion. It does not resolve on its own. It is, it is, um, and so for that, it requires intervention beyond just providing, uh, um, a medicine that just resolves the symptoms. It, it requires, I think, a fair amount of, well, good skilled clinical work and, um, and potentially the use of psychedelic medication. I'll get to that in a minute again. Um, because the other thing with trauma, um, I like to say is that it creates a scenario where somebody both has a foot in the here and now and a foot in the past. Right? If you've known anybody that has had traumatic experiences in their life, um, whether it's combat-related, first responder-related, or just trauma-related, childhood trauma, there is a piece of them that, uh, with that unresolved trauma, even though they know where they are, when the fireworks goes off, uh, during the parade, it triggers them. Like, it's like a piece of them, even though they know they're sitting in Wyndham Park, Colorado, there's a piece of them somewhere deep down that feels like they're, uh, in theater, in combat. And that doesn't, again, that does not resolve itself. It's not like, okay, if I go to fireworks a bunch of times, uh, that'll resolve. Like, it, it takes intervention to, to resolve that. Um, the other area of efficacy where a lot of, uh, research has been done is, uh, people that have been diagnosed with terminal medical illnesses, cancer, uh, um, A L S, things like that. Um, that is obviously a very acutely stressful situation. That is not post-traumatic stress. That is acute stress going on for that person. Um, and there are great studies, uh, and I've, and I've been, uh, a witness of it as well, um, anecdotally with my own experience. Uh, people that are just like, I, I had a person who literally told me, um, with a stage four lung cancer diagnosis, I actually don't want to live any longer if I'm gonna feel like this. If, if I'm gonna be this anxious for this long. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to do this. Um, and that particular person participated in the journey and, uh, told me that she has, uh, hope, hope not just for here and now, but, uh, has some, uh, hope for what, whatever's gonna come, uh, after her illness takes her. And, um, and that's seen in the literature too, uh, all over the place. And obviously, that's another uh, group of people. Uh, God forbid, any of us in this room end up in that situation. If that is something that can provide comfort, um, i- it can be an amazing tool to help with that. Um, as part of, uh, as part of my experience walking through this as well, oftentimes phobias are attributed to trauma, either directly or, or loose association. And so I've seen those resolve as a part of this. Overall fear and anxiety, people feeling like they're stuck or just can't, uh, can't get through their anxiety. Um, there's actually, uh, a physician here in town, uh, who has begun to refer people for journeys who test for cortisol levels all the time. And, uh, people with kind of acutely high cortisol levels all the time are, are beginning to, uh, reap the benefits of this medication. Um, and then I'm gonna skip to the end there, meaning and purpose. I've also had people, uh, that have felt very listless or aimless. And this is probably a little bit having to do with depression as well. As they are transitioning into retirement or in, into an empty nest, uh, having kind of a transcendent experience through the use of psychedelics has been extremely helpful with that as well. Okay. We're gonna keep moving.
Gee, sorry.
Yeah, no, I won't have to apologize. I appreciate the question.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you keep calling, I, well, I'm not sure, you, you're calling something a journey and I, I, I kind of like some clarification.
Cool, good. I'd love to do that. Um, I'll do that now. Well, look at, it's right there on my next slide. Uh, thank you, George, for teeing it up for me. Um, so there's kind of a, there's a procedure that people need to follow that comes with, uh, with kind of responsibly doing this and honestly doing it in a way that is, uh, compliant with the rules set forth by Dora, and I just think, uh, best practice. Um, first part of that is, uh, a screening process. Uh, there are, uh, counter indications to people participating in journeys. Um, a brief list would be people with a, uh, a close family history of schizophrenia. Anyone on lithium, lit- people cannot be on lithium, which is a bipolar medication. And, uh, participate in a journey. And then, uh, some of the S S R I's like, uh, Prozac, Phloxetine, uh, can also interrupt a journey process. Um, and then people also have to have a good structured support system because it can be, uh, really kind of challenging to kind of, uh, have this sort type of, uh, experience. So those things have to be in place, uh, in order for somebody to move forward, uh, in a journey process. And then there's a preparation process, uh, which involves, um, meeting with, uh, a professional that's trained in this, setting reasonably, uh, um, intentions for the journey, reasonable expectations for it, normalizing it, dealing with the anxiety that can come, uh, leading up to a journey. And then we have a journey, which is, um, I guess what's kind of colloquially what we call the part where they're under the effects of the medicine, the procedure, if you will. And, uh, and that's what we're here, that's what causes this to be kind of something that is, uh, that we're all here to talk about is the part, the, the period of time when somebody is under, uh, the effects of the medicine. And usually, uh, there's both what's called ma- microdosing, which is taking small amounts of the medicine and taking it frequently, and that would be similar to taking your medication, taking your Prozac or whatever, where although it isn't usually daily, usually it's about three times a week that people would take a microdose, but that's not necessarily what healing centers are for. Healing centers are for, um, this macrodose opportunity, which is taking, um, a larger dose, which provides, um, a psychedelic effect, which is kind of that, um, kind of that transcendent experience. It's ar- it's hard to describe. Uh, I've learned in the process of being trained in this, the word ineffable, which just means hard to put words around it. But the journey itself tends to be a pretty ineffable experience for people that they have a difficulty, uh, putting words around it. But that is the process of that, um, do you want to hear that part? Like, is that too much detail to talk about? Okay. Um, okay. So psilocybin mushrooms, uh, I, I like to say that they are trauma-seeking missiles. When you take a macrodose of this, uh, it is gonna search out and find, uh, trauma within people in a way that, uh, can take months and months of good clinical care to help people either unearth that or begin to process it. These mushrooms just seem to do that. And I can talk about why here in a second. Um, so when people, uh, are doing a journey, at least how I like to set it up is, uh, again, I don't want to get too granular, but, uh, at least Kelly, I'm gonna count on you to stop me if I'm getting too granular about this stuff. Um, but there are kind of levels. So like a microdose typically is under one gram, uh, of the dried fruit body of the mushroom. Under, under that is, uh, is, um, the microdose from about one gram to maybe two and a half or three grams for most people. These are, I'm speaking in generalities. Uh, the mushrooms will create what's called a psycholytic effect, which is where somebody maybe feels a little bit of euphoria or feels some sort of, um, hmm, different blues or bluer greens or greener, but they aren't really kind of sinking into like a detachment from reality. And then usually around three to three and a half, uh, grams of the dried fruit body is, uh, considered a therapeutic dose. And then, uh, five grams of it is usually considered a hero dose, if you will. That's again, pretty colloquial term. So there's like a scale of it. And all that to say, um, when people come, if they don't have much experience, uh, with psychedelic mushrooms, I'll, I'll frankly start them on a low dose at the beginning, see how they're tolerating it and then, um, kind of do verbal consent for them if they would like more. And if they'd like to deepen their experience, uh, we'll offer more. So anyway, when people, uh, the, the effects of psilocybin mushrooms usually take around five hours for the most part. Again, there's some people that come out of the medicine a little quicker. Some people, uh, it takes longer while they're under the influence of it. And then during that time, usually the first bit, not, you don't feel anything. And then usually for about thirty-five minutes, maybe an hour, you might feel good, like a sense of euphoria. You might feel, some people giggle, laugh, uh, um, feels really nice. And for some people that have been feeling like absolute, uh, dirt for a long time, this is actually really nice part of the journey. Uh, but I also do prep people that, uh, first is the work or first is the fun, then comes the work. Because after that, about an hour in, that is when, um, usually s- some anxiety spikes and that's what having good people, uh, trained in this, helping people get through that part. Um, and then usually then some sort of transcendent experience usually begins after that point and usually lasts a couple hours.
Jason, uh,
Yes.
Since you're on this, uh, subject.
Yeah.
Is how and where do you start with the treatments? Now, how much the dosage? How much do you, how do you know where to start with each individual person? Because say, yeah, I may be bigger than, you know, uh, Carol Harvey here.
You're lucky. Yeah, it's possible.
You know, her tolerance could be higher than mine.
Mm-hmm.
So you start off with a, a baseline and work from there? Or how does, how does that work? Because everybody's system is different.
And that is, that is honestly why I like to do a graduated dosing where, uh, give people a, a, a lower dose. Like, there, there are some people that have, that I've, uh, guided, that they've done twenty of these things and they can come in and tell me what they need. And we can go straight to that. However, uh, in, in that case, that's why I start slow. Like, obviously, uh, you can't take it out of somebody's system. So like giving them kind of a lower dose, seeing how they respond, and then offering more, um, in a graduated way is the best way, in my opinion, to do this. Usually, um, my personal preference is to offer between one and one and a half grams at the beginning, which is usually just enough for people to feel a little sparkly.
You just mentioned something that I hadn't, hadn't realized. So it, it accumulates in an individual's system. It does not disperse. It's not.
Like over that period of time?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, for that five hours?
Oh, for the five hours.
Yeah, for the five hours. Yeah, it doesn't kind of build up.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I believe it's, yeah, I, actually, I don't know, so I'm not gonna say that. Yeah, it's fully out of the system in twenty-four hours. That's pretty accurate. Usually considerably less time than that.
That brings me to another question. So I'm assuming that you're, you're working from a healing center somewhere else in the state right now.
No, ma'am. Doing this in the, uh, not the decriminalized world.
I, I have no idea what you just meant. I I have no idea what you just meant.
So I I just meet people where they are, maybe go to their house or do whatever under. So basically, as part of Prop one twenty-two, it does allow people to provide what's called either harm reduction or or practices in a spiritual way. And this is considered a harm reduction intervention. But now that we're entering into this regulated world, that's what I'm trying, like, that's the entire point of us being here is that I want to get out of that kind of decriminalized world and get into like above.
So an individual that's participating in a journey under your supervision, how long do you have to? How long would it be before that individual would be able to operate a vehicle, for instance?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I, I never let anybody drive, even like if somebody, you know, maybe does this in the community or maybe not at their home, they do not drive. They either have to get somebody to pick them up or have other arrangements to, you know.
Well, as we enter this regulatory environment, are you saying that going forward, you would not be able to meet someone at their home and help them through this journey? It would have to be.
In Colorado, that is gonna remain legal. I do think that can be, I think, I think there are municipalities that have restricted that and some that have welcomed it.
If you establish a healing center here in Woodland Park, after we figure out where and how that would happen, how long would you keep an individual in the healing center before you would let them get into their vehicle?
I I honestly, I think I would treat it more like going and getting a colonoscopy or something and just make sure you have a ride to get home.
There's no requirement for that, though. And I assume that there's no.
Like as far as the law?
Correct.
Not that I'm aware of. Okay. So the law may say it's five hours after, but I would not be comfortable letting somebody drive.
Would we have a, is there any type of tolerance test that a law enforcement officer could administer to determine if someone was driving under the influence of this particular substance?
That is beyond my expertise, to be honest with you. I know I know the chief is gonna talk.
So maybe that would be.
I think that that is a great question. But I, for me personally, as being a licensed addiction counselor, like believe it or not, sometimes people aren't all the way honest with me or come to therapy sessions high. And I'll ask them for their keys and I'll tell them that I'll call the police if they try to drive under the influence and give me your keys and you need to make arrangements to find a way home. Not as a mean thing, but like it's just a social responsibility. And I feel like it's a responsibility in my license to to kind of protect the public from that. And and certainly, I think that that is a great point and question, actually. But I I have never had somebody drive after a journey, not even, I mean, within twenty-four hours, maybe.
But you've been working in residential or home environments, not in a clinic.
Questions?
Answer.
May as well, before we get too far gone. So I got my licensed professional counsel, counselor deal back in nineteen eighty-nine. And I had to treat trauma in the old fashioned way, so years and years and years. And so EMDR and now mushrooms, it's like, oh, my gosh, this could have saved people a lot of money. My question, I have a couple of questions. So you said something about you, in order to decrease the stigma associated, you, like you would be picky about the location. So you wouldn't want it in an industrial area.
That's correct.
Would you also conversely not want it in a very public setting? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I hear.
Like a secret location, but.
Like, do I want it on the strip downtown? Probably not.
In the same way that AA meetings are kind of tucked away, they're not usual, you know, because people can sit outside and.
Yeah, and I think you know, to me, and I I put on here set and setting, which just means like how you set people up to have a good experience, then the setting matters a lot. It really does. Like, if if it feels safe and comfortable, I mean, in that, that part hasn't changed from treating trauma, right? Like, people have to feel safe and they have to feel like they're comfortable enough to kind of let their guard down. Because if people don't kind of let their guard down, they will stay kind of in that anxious place through a lot of their journey. They'll just stay anxious. They won't be able to kind of get through and allow the process to work. And so you know, like, I know that there's, there's this balancing act. I'm aware of that. Like, I as close to a home type setting is what makes the most sense to me. But obviously, you know, like you can make this room feel like a home with some money, probably, or with some investment.
And then are you gonna be, will you be the therapist that's working with them beforehand to get them ready and then afterwards? Or will it be referrals from other therapists and?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So I do think obviously, if a therapist refers somebody for a journey, I I wouldn't want to like take the client away from them. But if somebody, you know, maybe gets referred and then their therapist isn't familiar with helping with the integration process or or just gets uncomfortable with it, I'm happy to make sure, like, obviously, as part of having a license in this as well, you can't just kind of abandon clients, right? Like, you can't just like relay them open and then be like, good luck. I hope everything works out out there in the world. And and so I I think there'll be some that are, that kind of stay and and either do work with me. Obviously, I am one person and scaling an operation like this is going to require other people to be able to provide those types of services. But certainly in the short term, it would be me.
And do you already have a practice here?
My my practice is down the springs. Yep. And I said questions, I did it.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
I just let you know, I'm all for the psychedelics and stuff. I know many veterans with PTSD. I know people that have PTSD. PTSD that weren't in, you know, military services and stuff like that. And it does benefit them. But in talking with those, you know, those men and women, you know, I got some questions and the first question would be, you know, who will administer the treatments and how are they qualified? Now, will you be the only person up here to start? And will you expand out to other qualified counselors that are qualified in this type of treatment?
Yeah, and so there are the, I I really appreciate the question. And obviously, even qualified people matters a lot. And what the state is providing a few designations. One is a clinical facilitator, so somebody with a clinical license. But they also are providing certification for a wellness facilitator, which is somebody that doesn't have a license, but wants to kind of just be a part of this process. Not the therapy before or after, but just part of kind of sitting in what we counselors like to call holding space for people while they're under under the effects of the actual medicine. So there's it doesn't necessarily have to be a counselor that's doing that. There are other there are other qualified people that can do kind of that particular portion of it. And, yeah, and part of, part of the training too does involve like proper handling of the of the medicine. As of a week ago, there still is no way to kind of legally purchase the mushrooms. Like they, they, they are creating the Department of Revenue is creating, you know, obviously, opportunities for people to purchase these, but they have to have licenses and that sort of, they have the right qualifications. There's also certification for transporting these, like in a vehicle, like there's a particular certification for that as well. You can't just throw them in the trunk of your car and drive them around. But all of this is being built in real time. Like, we're all, like, we're literally creating a vertical like out of nothing. So we're figuring it all out.
Jason, your, your end, end game here is to hopefully establish a healing center that you would manage or you would work under another licensed practitioner. What, what's your?
It would, it would be, yeah, that's my vision.
How, how do you obtain the substance now? Do you?
Through what's called legacy means just people that have people that have, I mean, people have been doing this for, obviously, I mean,
Sure.
This, the lights didn't come on two years ago because Prop one twenty-two passed. And so I just have access to people that I fully trust that that are providing it now. And that's been, again, the standard. But as we move toward a regulated way, that's, yeah. Then it'll be regulated. Then there'll be lot numbers and ability to recall the medicine, like.
Right now, there is no regulation and no.
Regulations are all there, just no, like, nobody has gotten over the finish line of setting up a regulated shop.
Okay, so when you obtain it, you're confident that the substance you obtain is not too much or not too little?
Correct, yeah, that it and obviously, when it, when it moves out of the legacy and into the regulated realm, then it's, then we're gonna know like, we'll have, like, we'll know the numbers of it, like, we'll know specifically how much psilocin and psilocybin is in any given dose. Right now, it's just by tradition, by like the tradition of how these strains have been grown and and how they affect people.
But at this point, you know, I appreciate this is your community as much as it is ours and that you are helping people. But you can't charge them for the substance. You can only charge an individual for your counseling services. So there's no insurance coverage at this point. And VA does not cover it as well. VA, I know, is working on a lot of not experimentation, I say research and development in this field. But right now, that's, that's not in their, not in their, you know, resource pool.
Correct.
So you would want to establish a healing center where you're offering counseling services for a number of problem sets. But the psychedelic drugs are just provided as part of that, but you're not charging for it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I and to be honest with you, the community of people that do this, there's, it's, to be honest with you, it's donated. Like, I'm not, I'm not paying anything for it either, if I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you. Like, it's just, that's been the tradition. That's been the legacy of this, is that this isn't something to make a lot of money off of. And that is not my goal either, as I think you can, hope you can tell. And you're right, I, I, you know, the VA does not move at the speed of sound, believe it or not, as I, as I'm sure you know, Carol. But like, it's gonna take time, I'm sure, for them to get on board with this. And certainly, having the ability to provide something affordable to people that are suffering, like, I I don't want to treat the top one percent of people, right, and set up a spa and do that sort of thing and and charge, you know, six grand or something for this. Like, I I want to keep it very reasonable. And I think I have strategies to do that. You know, as part of working at VHTC, I mean, there are, there are nonprofit places all over, but in the Springs I know about that are paying two, three, four thousand dollars to send people to Peru to seek, sending vets to Peru to seek this treatment. If we can have it like up the hill and charge a fraction of that, that gets me excited.
And I want to say there's a difference between a product that you want to provide to help people, but also your counseling services. Are your counseling services covered by insurance policies?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know.
And you do bring up a good point that I do want to make.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And I know I've said this and I, and I, and I believe this is understood, but obviously, this is not a product based business at all. Like, this is a service-based business. And, you know, certainly, when I first presented at city council, people were talking to me in the hallway and like we're never gonna have it up here. We don't want marijuana. We don't want, like, this is not that. People do not leave the center with psilocybin mushrooms, right? Nor do you leave the dentist's office with nitrous oxide. You get a procedure, you have the medicine while you're there, you come off the medicine, you leave, same process. This is not you know, this isn't like, we're gonna put a big neon mushroom sign on the highway and and promote buying it. That's not the purpose of it. I don't think the stores are gonna, like, the way to acquire the medicine is going to require people to have certifications and be able to handle the medicine accordingly. And so I think it's just really important to emphasize that point. So.
So, okay. Since we're sort of kind of on that, my question is, and for me, it's really important. You know, how, say a person has insurance, but it's not covered for that?
Yeah.
How will you be able to make it affordable for the average Joe off the street to, you know, any of the veterans with PTSD? You know, how would that be possible and affordable for those people? Because not all rags retire with high amounts. There's some that, you know, probably make just a little bit more than I do.
Yeah.
Okay, how will you be able to make that possible for those citizens?
Yeah.
So Jason, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if we can get through the rest of his, how much longer do you think you have? Because we've, we're getting close to six o'clock and we do have some other people to, to hear from. So, and I don't want to not answer your question. But maybe that will come out if we get, if he can finish.
Sounds good.
Okay, if you don't mind, thank you.
I don't have a slide on that. So let me, I'll, I'll take the question. Like five more minutes, Kelly? Like, I'll breeze through the rest of my slides. Because I do, I I do want to be mindful of that. I think there's a variety of ways to keep prices down. First of all, obviously, the less onerous regulation is and that sort of thing, the easier it'll be to operate, right? And and the ease of operation is going to be a key part of this. A big thing, and I, and I've sat not here, in a different place, I've sat in a group. The other option is group settings. Instead of writing individual care, it's always less expensive to provide group experiences. And I have a fair amount of experience with that. I actually guided a journey in Evergreen with ten veterans and we had, you know, six guides and and it was awesome. And it, and it is so much easier to provide significantly reduced opportunities for people. And and I'll be honest with you, I've yet to turn any, any anybody, I've stated things that I charge people for my services, but I've, I have not turned anybody away. If they, if they tell me they can only afford X amount, then, and I know that's one thing to stand here and say, and it's hard to build a business on that way, but I, so I plan, like, obviously, once this is above board, then I also have the access to some of these nonprofits too, to be able to request some help and support. But so I see groups as an option, to be honest with you, when when like there's an hourly rate that probably has to be met by a center, if you have, if that's spread across four or five people, that gets considerably easier to, to make the budget balance, if you will. But that isn't always an option or always the most helpful for people. So, I mean, I think it's gonna take a variety of, of variety of actions on that. But but believe me, my, my heart is certainly there with, you know, with the people that, you know, the veterans, for instance, for instance, and first responders that are necessarily able to carve out four-figure checks or something like that. Like, I'm, I'm open to that for sure.
You did say that you, you do accept health insurance.
Yeah, for the counseling sides, right. But the journey itself, if we do that in a group setting, that can really keep costs.
And not charging for the substance, I don't.
Yeah, you cannot cannot and will not charge. Like, there's no, no matter how much somebody needs or takes or what.
So are you saying that some health insurance companies will if they know that they're going to participate in a journey, they will not cover the rest of their counseling services?
No, they'll cover it. Yeah, I, yeah.
Can I ask one more question and then I promise to be quiet? For a minute.
Jason, if you're gonna answer it in the rest of your presentation, would you please make?
Oh, it's about, it's about the cost to providers. Is it true that it's a six thousand dollar for your license and can go up to ten thousand dollars for renewal?
Yeah, I, I signed up for a class today. It's costing me seven thousand dollars and it's you know, and obviously, I'm, I'm trying to be practical and I hope to earn that back at some point. But I do feel fortunate too, like I'm fully licensed in a lot of ways, so I have other ways to help people and make money. And so like, I'm not too worried about that. But yeah, it's expensive and all of these licenses are expensive.
Anybody that's applying for this to have a healing centers must be serious or they're not gonna be spending.
Thank you. Yes, exactly. This isn't, the bar is high and for good reason, because I, those, I mean, I think the state has to charge that because they don't know what it's gonna cost to help regulate it. And how many complaints they're gonna get and how much they're gonna have to come and do inspections. They have no idea. I hope they come down once, if we can all operate professionally and above board, then hopefully those prices will come down. But I'm also pretty realistic that it's gonna take time. I'm just gonna skip to these. You know, I, I was talking to some people that I work around and work with. You know, I, I was talking to some people that I work around and work with and maybe talk to, and I just collected some quotes. That what a lot of veterans and a lot of people are turning to is the drug of alcohol, right? Which, uh, is readily accessible, the army, everybody's okay with it, um.
Oh, my goodness, isn't that last guy the one who just blew himself up in Las Vegas?
Yes, and I wanted to bring him up, cause obviously, he was from the Springs, and so, I, I didn't know him, but I know people who knew him. And, um. And what, what I wanted to say about this is, like, I, I get some chills, and I know this might be a little bit provocative, but, um, obviously, he's an SF guy, he's Green Beret, right? And, um. And, eh, the Department of Defense, whoever the higher-ups are above the Green Berets, sent out a memo, uh, to all the Green Berets. Um, after this happened, and you know what that memo said? If your ID, if you aren't compliant with your beard and haircut on your ID, you need a new ID, period. Because Master Sergeant, uh, Livel's Burger had a beard in hi- on his ID. They didn't say, sorry, this happened. They didn't say, what support do you need? What helped you? That, none of it was supportive. It was, we're embarrassed, not about the event, but about the dude having a beard on his ID. And that pissed me off, excuse me, sorry, but like, that makes me, like, that's, that's what I think we are trying to overcome here, is that stigma. Right? We're trying to overcome that, like, this is not as, as far as the army, I think, has come in helping people out. There's a long way to go. And, um, it is hard for me to have people say things like this in my session. And I have this tool on my tool belt that I'm like, you need a journey, man. I'd love to be able to offer that more and more readily to people that are, that are just suffering. And so, uh, these are the studies, I'm not gonna sit here and read all of them. This is increasingly well-studied. Johns Hopkins is kind of the main one, that's kind of studying this, um. I'll, I'll make my slides available.
Yes, that'd be great, if you could send them to the clerk.
I'll go ahead and end now, if that's okay. Um, but I do really appreciate the time and the attention, um. In, in, in the closing remarks, I mean, obviously, um, this is something that I, that I, that I really do care about. And I, and I think I've said it in here before too, I, I didn't, I don't even really wanna be here. But I've watched this medicine help people so much. I've watched it make incredible changes, uh, in ways that people had no, uh, no ability to expect, um. And so, uh, I hope you guys will take that into consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Don't forget to tip your waders.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Chief, would you join us, please? So you're on here for enforcement and issues?
So I hear, yes, uh, first, very quickly, this is the first time I've seen the collective group, uh, just real quick, happy new year. Uh, I was not here in the last meeting, uh, but for formality sake, I've only felt necessary. Looking forward to working with each and every one of you as we move forward into the next year, uh, for some more good stuff. Uh, nonetheless, I'll start with the questions about, uh, impairment and detection. I'm fairly confident that most of the standardized exercises for the detection of impaired driving would, would definitely fit into this, into this bubble. Uh, should the need arise, I think the ability to detect, uh, the impairment of a driver is a. It's a big puzzle. It's not just one single event that makes a DUI impairment charge. You combine it with a lot of other things, but the standardized field sobriety exercises, or tests, as they're sometimes called. Uh, would definitely be a tool that we could use to detect someone's inability to operate their motor vehicle.
My, my, my concern was, I know when, um, Amendment sixty-four passed. That this, a lot of law enforcement entities would default to driving under the influence of alcohol because testing for THC is expensive and cumbersome. So in this instance, if someone decided to self-medicate with, and do a journey. Um, and you wanted to bring charges against them, how would you be able to determine that that was what they were under the influence of?
Sure, uh, and it will rely on testing, rely on chemical testing.
Chemical testing.
A lot of it will rely on us taking samples to submit them to a lab. Uh, that's one of the nuances here, it's a little bit different from what I'm used to, um, but again, it does not mean that we cannot charge someone for that. It just might mean that we have to take steps to perhaps find them a ride home while we get the testing results back, and then file a charge later, as the case may be. Um, it may oftentimes, depending on the circumstance, and again, I wish you could rubber stamp these, but you simply can't. Uh, it might be that there's an incident that's a much larger issue that would necessitate criminal charges. And this is just a rider, which would, you know, allow us to transport someone for a more serious offense, and then, of course, add the charges when appropriate. But the, the testing is a, is a solid piece of equipment that we have, so I don't, I want, don't want anybody to think that. Whether it's this hallucinogenic compound or another, that we would not be able to detect impairment of someone on a scene. Uh, my bigger concern is, and I think you guys touched on it, was what safeguards are in place to make sure that we're just not randomly allowing people to leave? And I, I loved when I heard, uh, you know, put some sort of restrictions on it internally, where you have, uh, I think it was the colonoscopy reference, you know? Get a ride here, get a ride home. Um, I mean, I come out of, you know, anesthesia a couple of times, and I'm not driving anywhere. But if, if there were safeguards and policies in place that we had enforcement action on, uh, of course, you, you, you understand that. Uh, the, the fine folks who wanna do this the right way are never the problems, it's the ones who don't wanna, you know, do the right thing, and then everybody else pays the price for it. Uh, but I think, you know, if we work with folks and we have solid practices in place, and we can rely on them as a community partner. Uh, and not cross that fine line between partnership and being a nuisance, uh, I think that you can work with anybody who's got the right spirit.
Chief, do you yourself have any concerns?
You know, I, I hate to say yes, and I hate to say no, because it, if I say yes, it leads that there's this bigger issue in my head. And then it's really not. Uh, I think what time and experience has taught me is, is that we always go into these types of things with some bit of a, a neutral approach, and we just look at the best way we can to help keep things in check. And then rely on the business owners and the operators to be good partners. Uh, when we have a problem, then we can step up through enforcement efforts and take some sort of action to negate what we're seeing. But, um, a lot of the concerns, if you will, for lack of a better word, that I had, are fairly well addressed in the laws and in some of these policies that you likely have read. Uh, I can, you know, recall, you know, many years ago, uh, when some of the marijuana dispensaries in the southeast were coming into prominence. Security was a big deal, you know, onsite security, alarm systems, uh, whether or not there's security when, uh, the business opens up and people are coming to get the product in hand, uh, you know, what does that look like? Some of the, what I read in the language is, is pretty good, and it addresses a lot of that. But again, I think it would be, would be great to have the, uh, owners and the operators and the city all be on the same page on. You know, what does that expectation look like, and how do we, you know, how do we work together?
Well, that would be my question to our city attorney, um, in terms of, we, we have, we cannot prohibit. The, the operation of a healing center, but we can control time, place, and manner. Um, and I mentioned earlier that Colorado Springs has just went way, uh, to one extreme and said that these healing centers cannot be within a mile of a school or a daycare center. Um, what are your, I mean, we're a very compact little town, I mean, we're surrounded by national forests. You can't say, okay, we'll let you do it, but you have to do it in fluorescent. What are your concerns about proximity to schools?
Here the message, not the words. I like exclusionary zones for a host of reasons. Sadly, the world we live in oftentimes is an optics thing, right? We oftentimes deal with folks who do not completely grasp a concept or a topic and want to run to extremes on what they think or don't think. However, the idea is to try to plan for the what-if at some level, right? We could be working fine for months, and then the what-if happens. And perhaps those exclusionary zones may keep us from having to enact a full-scale Code Red lockdown of a school. Because now we have someone running away on foot from a center that's too close. Uh, again, I, I, I can't say that that will happen, I don't know, but, you know, my, my experience tells me, try to plan ahead for the unanticipated issues. Um, and exclusionary zones, uh, did not, uh, hamper or inhibit in any way the operation of some of the facilities from where I come from. They were able to negotiate it just fine. As a matter of fact, funny, Aaron and I were talking about it too long ago, yesterday, I think my time continuum was a little bit screwed. Um, you know, we, we actually were in a, in a position to regulate what zonings they could go in and where they could go. And it exactly did what, what, what suggested is, you know, we ended up putting them in all industrial, one light zoning and industrial, and kind of pushed them off to the wayside. And things have changed, and rules are different here. But, um, I do like the idea of an exclusionary zone, for what it's worth, um, just more or less for personal reasons and for those I just told you.
Well, Betsy, my other question was, can we make an, as part of our, whatever we codify here in regard to healing centers? Can we require certain, uh, security, um, enhancements, bars on the windows? Those, any, or, or how, how this, this particular, and what did you call them? You called them hallucinogenic? Yeah, products. Can they, you know, that they have to be stored in a, a safe, or can that be part of our, our code?
Absolutely, and so I wanna clarify one thing, so how I, I used the word residential dwelling earlier. The state regulation doesn't say it has to be a thousand from a residential dwelling, that is simply what Monument, um, Parker and Castle Rock. Thank you, dead in there, so that's something you have the ability, because we do have the ability to zone them, right? But, back to your question, is absolutely, you're, a lot of things, what the samples I gave in the packet say, is, you know, um. You can't have odors from growing them, if you're a cultivation business, would be, I think, the correct word there. You can't have odors coming out of the building, you can't use certain flammable or toxic materials. Um, eh, you must have certain lighting going on, uh, you must have the windows blacked out so people can't see in and see mushrooms being grown, you know, maybe if you want security, you enclose your goods with inside, not in a shed, not in a tent. It must be within the building, um, maybe you wanna have, and, and when I say surveillance cameras, it's not like in a Big Brother way. It's simply like a normal business, you just wanna know if somebody breaks in, how can you figure out? Now, I'm not advocating, I'm simply responding, either way, you all set the policy?
Jason's already stated, his objective is to be able to have a healing center, but another aspect of this whole issue is the cultivation side of it.
Yes.
So we need to address that as well, but our, our zoning, uh, table of uses already says, health services will only be in these specific zones. And then we go from there.
You can, yes.
And can we cap the number, uh, we're not gonna have one on every corner? Uh, we can cap the number of healing centers, right?
I have to look into that separately.
Will you please look into it?
Wonder what they base it on?
I'd also like to clarify too, healing center does not imply.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but I guarantee that we will have to face that.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Where one door opens, they say, another one will also follow. I think it's safe to assume that as things were to progress, it's always good to be ahead of the curve.
And I wanna say too, the samples I provided you are provided for a reason, I think that they really comply with the letter and spirit of the law, the law and balance. Exactly what Chief Deuser put out, let's make sure we have a sufficient distance away from school while also working in a partnership with the law and what's going to occur. And so there is a reason why, why I picked those, the samples, and, um, had Nina and Jeff's support on that as well, so.
Anything else?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but banana belt liquor is closer than a thousand feet to gateway. Someone, someone, someone tell me if I'm wrong.
I don't know, sir, I don't know.
Well, my point is, it, it is, if you look at our map, um, I have to say this. We allow alcohol on virtually every street corner, anywhere in America. Why are we so obsessed with exclusionary zones and all this other stuff for a substance that actually benefits people?
Because it's still a class one substance under.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I mean.
Anything else, counsel of the chief? Or questions of the rest of the staff that is this evening? All right, then, thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Don't leave, we might have something more.
I will be here.
All right, um, we did have, I know, at least one person that signed up to make com- we have three people that have signed up to make public comment. And I'd like to accept that compit- comment this evening, counsel. Um, so Suzanne, if you would guide us through that, please?
The first speaker is Eli Varney.
And we do have three limit ti- three-minute time limit for most public comment, I'm not real rigid, but just have that as your goal, if you would, please? And give us your name and, uh, city of residence, please.
My name is Eli Varney, I'm a resident of Woodland Park.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so first, uh, thank you for mayor, city council, and friends within the community to let me be here, I appreciate it. Um, like I said, my name is Eli, uh, married to a vet, I'm a vet as well, and we have two boys within the community, and we love being here. I have two deployments in combat zones, I'm a successful graduate of Army Ranger School as separate, as well as separate leader course. I've been in LPC for eight years, and my focus is trauma. Um, I'm trained in EMDR, internal family systems, as well as brain spotting. So, uh, during this, I'll talk a little bit about, uh, pro-silocybin treatment, especially tied to addiction, anxiety, depression, and PTSD. A lot of it we've already discussed, so I'm gonna go by a little bit faster, but, um. We talked about how the business plan, have a robust business plan with di- lots of different treatment modalities, if, was what I would like to see here. Cause again, it's about adapting ourselves to the need that the client has. Um, Jason already talked about the facility training programs, I looked at a few of these as well, they, they do cost seven to eleven thousand dollars. So we do have that investment, if people go that route. So in nineteen sixty-six, that's the last time there was a lot of psilocybin studies that were being done, and Jason talked a little bit about his treatment plan. But making sure that when following those established treatment plans that have worked, where they talked about, you get to know the client for about, uh, four sessions. You have about three to four sessions of microdosing, and then you have one session of a macro dose, where they actually have the full journey. Followed by then a re- uh, going down another four sessions of microdosing, followed by treatment as needed. So, um, just as these come into place, that's the part I would look at. Jason did touch on this as well, but it is a pretty big piece, so they've shown that bipolar and schizophrenia have shown not to integrate well with psilocybin. So that's a recommendation not to truly diagnose those until we've done more studies there. Uh, I just, I wanna reiterate the point, Jason mentioned the set, setting and support. There's two studies that were done in Great Britain in nineteen, or in, uh, two thousand eight. One was in the, like, oh, in a, an industrial, pretty unhealthy area, and the other was in like a safe home area. And what they've shown is, the people who were in that safe home area had a fifty percent higher success rate compared to those that were in an industrial area. The other part, talking about how, you know, clients who would leave an area if it's a, you know, if, you have something, if they have a bad trip. They show that if you bring someone there with them that they trust, statistically, they do not leave the area cause they have that family member or friend that's helping them through this journey. So, some of the benefits that I really wanna hit on today, so, most of those studies, and I can hand this to, uh, the clerk at the end, if you would like. But these came from the two thousand eight, um, this study right here, that actually broke down what works and what doesn't for the safety of the clients. So, um, number two, so this study with Siegel, this is from, uh, two, twenty twenty-four, pretty lengthy study. And it talks about how with psilocybin, it heals the anterior hippocampus, which that is your sense of space-time and self. So Jason mentioned with PTSD, when people go through traumatic events, they are actually backed in the event. That's because the hippocampus was activated during the traumatic memory, and the psilocybin actually allows that to heal. And, um. The best way I like to describe it is that it's like taking roadblocks that were in the brain to allow it to heal, and allows those to go away. So there's that one. This one, so, um, Jeff, you mentioned alcohol and how, say, how it's significantly more harmful. So this, uh, study came from two thousand nine, it came out of The Economist, and it actually ranks the top twenty most dangerous drugs in the United States. Alcohol is number one. Mushrooms is number twenty on the bottom, and has everything on the air from amphetamines to tobacco, cocaine, and methadone. So I thought, I just discovered that, and I thought that one's pretty interesting. Twenty sixteen, so this is number four study, um, what they noticed, so, especially in the mental health world, we like to look at studies. And like, what is the percentage of, um, Prozac, it's about a twenty percent people have positive effects off of Prozac. If you go TMS, it's about a, uh, sixty percent success rate. The twenty sixteen Johns Hopkins study showed that seventy-one percent of those who engaged in psilocybin had a positive effect based upon two different depression scales that they use, so higher than other forms of treatment we currently have.
So, I'm gonna ask you a favor.
Yes.
If you would leave those with the clerk, she will see that the council can read those and see them, and then if we. And then if we have further questions, we can certainly, we're going to address this more than one day.
Can I just say one last comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, I've had three clients, including myself, have used psilocybin to process their own PTSD. And it has helped me more than past ten years of therapy. All four of us combined have said that it's like finishing a twelve-mile ruck march, and we're able to put that ruck down. And we don't have to carry that weight anymore. In more ways than one, it is life-saving.
Thank you, sir. Suzanne, who do we have next?
Yes, our next speaker is Dalton Lane.
Welcome. If you wouldn't mind stating your full name and the city of residence, please.
Yep, Dalton Lane, Colorado Springs, Colorado.
Welcome.
Thank you. I was up here for twenty years, though, so I'm here to support my friend Jason. I was a paramedic firefighter up here in Woodland Park while in Taylor County for nineteen nineteen years. Um, a few years into my fire career, looking back, connecting the dots, it's a lot easier. Um, I started experiencing symptoms of PTSD. I didn't know that at the time. Um, had uh cancer diagnosis, went through a divorce. Uh, work continued getting harder for me. Um, I was introduced to psychedelics. I had gone through several depressive episodes that um got worse and worse and worse. Finally, I was uh experiencing severe suicidal ideation and had tried every different modality that was offered to me, talk therapy. I I I learned breathing techniques, meditation, all the things that you you can do, and um, they all seem to help a little bit. Um, about five, six years ago, I was introduced to psilocybin, and I can basically say there was my life before, psilocybin my life after. Um, the suicidal ideation just vanished, never to come back. Um, I was able to deal with my PTSD symptoms. Unfortunately, it was a little bit late. I actually did have to leave the fire department after nineteen years in November uh with a official PTSD diagnosis. Part of me wonders what would have happened if I had access to this medicine um halfway through my career. And if I was able to kind of deal with some of this stuff as I was working, because I really do love that job, and I don't get to do that anymore. Um, now that I am officially retired um on disability, I've been in this uh psychedelic space for, like I said, five years. I believe in it. I've um helped facilitate lots of individuals. I've started facilitating with Jason, and we're doing group journeys together. Um, all of our clients look like all of you guys. I've attended several psychedelic summits. And I think, uh, maybe it's tempting to think that it's full of, you know, that stereotype that might come to mind when you think psychedelics. You know, the largest psychedelic uh conference on the face of the earth is held in Denver, and it is full of nerds and dorks, lots of doctors with ties and lots of letters behind their names. It's a very legitimate world. Um, so yeah, I just just like Jason, I signed up uh for, this is going to be my next careers dealing with uh mental health issues in the first response world. I was on the peer support team before I retired, and I intend to keep doing that. So, um, I also just put seven thousand dollars on a credit card to uh do the same facilitation school. So Jason and I will both be starting that on January twenty-first, and I would love to come back up to Woodland Park um and help facilitate here. I spent twenty years up here. I graduated high school up here. I raised four kids up here, and I just retired from the fire department up here. I really believe in the medicine and, um, yeah, I would love to answer anybody's questions outside of this session. Um, I would like to think I'm semi-knowledgeable on this stuff after five or six years, so uh thank you for the time and
Thank you.
For your consideration.
Thank you. Then we have Steve Lee. All right. Welcome. If you could just state your name and your city of residence, please.
Hi, I'm Steve Lee. I live in Woodland Park.
Thank you.
And uh moved here in two thousand, moved away for a few years and back this spring. And I've just been working with Jason some on his operations plan. We intend to do this as to the book as we can and really follow the 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 rules as they've been laid out for us. So that's really an ambition of mine, is to be as crisp with that as we can, as as we sort of, you know, raise this whole industry out of what it is now to a fully regulated environment. A couple of things that have concerned me, and I just want you to be aware as you think this through. One is the hours of operation. Um, there were a few municipalities who have put like a open at five, close at or open at eight, close at five. That, I think, would be extremely difficult. Um, Jason's been operating in more of an overnight fashion, which really works very, very well for a group. Um, partly because there's this sleep time that people uh have to sort of release the medicine over time. Um, it also creates a better set and setting, as we talked about. So my recommendation might be to do a seven AM, seven PM, where there aren't vehicles leaving between the hours of seven PM and seven AM. So we don't have traffic on the streets or whatever, people coming and going in the middle of the night. But that it would be an over, that it would facilitate an overnight kind of environment. Um, or an overnight modality. Uh, another one is around the the bars on the window. I I know that that ha- is a recommendation that some of the municipalities have taken on. There is, there is uh locking the the medicine in a safe is one of the requirements in a healing center. Um, as well as being under a video surveillance. So there is a lot of that already being done. The mushrooms themselves don't actually have very much value. Um, the regulated mushrooms may end up being very expensive. We don't know yet, but there are a number of growers, they're easy to grow, that it isn't, this is not a kind of pharmaceutical product, even though the legislation kind of describes it as a pharmaceutical product. Um, so that's something to consider, I think. And then the third thing is really the um, the outdoor space, this I haven't done my journey yet, but I'm I'm excited to do that. But what I understand from Jason and others that have gone through the process, that outdoor experience is very uh, rich. Um, being able to see the natural world, being able to connect with the natural world as part of the journey. Um, that's a really important part. So we want to balance that idea of privacy. And I think that's super important, but but if we could somehow accommodate the natural world, that would be fantastic as well.
Thank you.
Just my thoughts.
All right. I unfortunately, I'm sorry, I'm going to close the public comment because the council needs an opportunity, and I have done a poor job of managing time tonight. Counsel, for that, I apologize. But, um, what we would like to accomplish, if we can, and if we can't, then we'll take another opportunity. Because I think it's important that we consider this well and get it right as right we can the first time. Well, Kelly, at the end of tonight's uh council meeting, can we give guidance to the staff from where we are right now? After the, and when we go to council reports.
You can do it. I have it as an agenda item right now.
Oh, okay, okay. So we could do that with our agenda item and have that discussion. Does that sound all right to you?
My short-term memory is gone, and perhaps I need a journey, but uh, that that was flipping, I'm sorry. Um, but yeah, I, while while we've got this in our minds now, I'd like to be able to to give guidance to the staff.
Sounds like a plan.
It's a, it's item one E, council discussion and direction to attorney and staff.
Well, that's on.
Yeah.
You were looking at.
I'm I'm looking at. I I was looking at at tonight.
Okay, it's on your work sess- session agenda. You can do it now, or you could do it later.
We have a meeting in seven minutes, so let's let's do that, um, during council reports, if that, it's unusual for us, but I think we should take the the time to have that conversation.
And I think one thing, um, you know, one way I was going to, we we did get a little close on time, but I think that's important. We heard all the comments, and you all were able to ask questions, so that's reasonable, absolutely. Um, to me, one thing I was going to recommend is with the samples I gave you, see what you like and, you know, like and don't like, and maybe if there's one that you see in there, you do you know, seems to resonate the most, or areas you don't like, let me know based on those. And if we need to go beyond today for guidance, we can, but it's up to you all.
We, I I think we have the luxury of time. Um, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, uh, we have until uh the moratorium was six months in length, so we do have time if we need to come back, if you all want to take more time, read the memo. Rest, you know, absorb the comments, the questions, everything and.
And this was rec- I'm sorry, and this was recorded, so we can listen to it again as well, if we, if there's some point we want to refresh our memory on. Um.
And we didn't have an opportunity for Karen to show us the maps yet.
The maps is another part, right?
I sort of feel like we should have another.
Another opportunity?
Yep.
Okay. I personally don't have an issue with that, uh, on the legal and policy side, for me to get instruction. We have time. There is the opportunity to extend a temporary moratorium if we need, but I think we'll obviously move to not do that, but just to let you know, we'll keep this moving. But we do have.
Can I ask you, um, Betsy, I know we we put a moratorium in place, but we're not allowed to regulate the healing centers or or any of the operations. So how does the moratorium work?
You can.
Regulate, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you you can't not, you can't put an ordinance together that says, no, you can't have it.
What we have right now is just a temporary moratorium that we we aren't going to allow the establishment until the time that our ordinance is passed, because it's a temporary nature. So we aren't banning, it's just the temporary, it's it's like it say, um, well, people did with marijuana, quite frankly. They said, you know what, this law came out, let's wait for the regulations, let's hear from the community, let's see how this is truly going. We're just going to do it on a temporary time, and the purpose is to balance the needs of the citizens, you all, policy, everything like that. So, no, totally fine. It's just for right now, it's whatever.
So I have made a note under mayor's report to pick this up and see if we can schedule another time for the council only to have the conversation so that we can give direction to the staff and the attorney. That sound all right? We can, we can do it then.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much, and we'll adjourn this work session, and the meeting begins in four minutes.